Okay. That being the case, meeting is called to order at 7:09 PM. Kristen, could you lead us in the present religions, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Kristen.
You're welcome.
Connie, could you do a roll call, please?
Tristan Davis.
Here.
Dawn Adams. Ryan Dusak.
He was excused, sorry, Connie.
It's okay. Ryan, okay, Ryan Dusak.
Excuse.
Okay, Jenna Hamm.
Here.
Michelle Nelson.
Here.
Nikki Demirz.
Here.
Vernon Carlson.
Here.
Kristen Randall.
Here.
James Tench.
Here. Quorum is present.
Mickey, could you lead us in the adoption of the agenda, please?
I move to adopt the agenda and the consent agenda. Second.
All right. Do I hear any objection to adopting the agenda as amended or as presented?
None.
All right, then. By unanimous consent, the agenda is set for the evening. Dan, would you like to lead us in the board greeting and reading?
For the greeting, you got a chance for us to say hello to each other, welcome people into the group and share something positive. So whoever chooses to go first, simply say hello to the rest of the board. The board will say hello to you by name and then just share something positive that's happening in your life, whether that's something with work, something with family, whatever it is for you at this point in time. And then at the end of that, simply kind of pass it on to the next person by just saying the next person's name who you'd wish to follow you. So do we have a brave soul who would like to go first? Vern?
Um, I just want to first of all, welcome everybody to the meeting and then how do we do this again?
You say, good evening, board.
Good evening, board.
And then we remind you who you are. Good evening, Vern. Then you can chat.
Anyway, I just want to just give, I guess, a shout out and thanks to the district as a whole that all three locations, actually all four locations, because we have some peak students, was able to have graduation. And everybody seemed very pleased with the process. We were able to watch the parade while we were in quarantine because when by most of them went by the house here. And, uh, and the students seemed very accepting of the change that we've currently adopted for our lives with the COVID thing, so. That, Nikki, you want to go next?
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
I, yeah, I second what Vern said about having graduations. And I am excited for plans this weekend to start gardening and doing stuff in the dirt. Good evening, Kristen.
Good evening, board.
Good evening, Kristen.
Um, I am very grateful for the opportunity that during this whole pandemic that I've had to spend with my family and have some really good quality time and great discussions and and just all that fun family time we've been able to have. And now Dalton's off and going again. So we're down one, but we sure, we sure loved having him here and, and loved being together as a family. Trista.
Good evening, board.
Good evening, Kristen.
Um, I guess I would say I am thankful for nice weather. So we can work in our yard. Spend kind of fun doing some projects that we don't normally do a lot of because we normally travel during the summertime and we haven't got to do that yet. So just finishing up some projects that we've been working on for a while and thankful of that. So, good evening, Jenna.
Good evening, Trista.
Good evening, Jenna.
Evening, Jenna.
I have been enjoying being at this end of the park. I am never here this time of year. So I discovered calypso orchids in the woods above the Triple Lakes Trail this spring, which was a delight of, I know they're here, but I've never seen them blooming before, and other wildflowers. And just enjoying the rise of spring in the woods as opposed to the tundra. Good evening, Connie.
Oh, good evening, board.
Good evening, Connie.
Good evening, Connie.
Well, I am excited that I was looking back and this is our, starting our third year. We've completed our third year of board docs. And I'm so excited how much that has changed my life for board meetings. So I'm really appreciative of that. And I'm also appreciative of all the nice weather we've had too, because we've, we've gotten a lot of yard work done too. So it just looks nice and it's fun to be outside. Um, let's see. Good evening, Michelle. I mean, Michelle, good evening.
Board.
Good evening, Michelle.
Um, I would have to say I'm thankful for all of our teachers that got us through the last few months of school. Um, I am very thankful that we are over with that and I'm looking forward to travel around the state this summer and hopefully being able to travel out of state in August. Uh, Dan.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, Dan.
Um, you know, I love and I'm just so kind of pleased and just kind of refreshed by like that warm sunlight in the evening to like, to sit on the deck and like, kind of the not doing of much other than sitting on the deck in the sun, waiting for a moose to walk by. That's something I've always kind of appreciated about Alaska since I, you know, first moved up as an adult in 95. Was, you know, when it finally got to 1996, that period of time of like, oh, it's eight o'clock and it's just so nice to sit and relax outside instead of having to like race in because it's getting dark and cool. So very happy about that. James?
Good evening, board.
Good evening, James.
I am thankful to be in Alaska for what looks like all summer this year. We traveled so much last year, we realized we didn't even get a single camping trip in last year. So total opposite this year, but I'm really excited about it and plan to see things that I've put off 10 years or more that we haven't ever done here. So we're looking forward to it. And I think that's it, isn't it?
Yep.
Lead us through the, the reading.
Okay, Kestlin, can you enable my ability to screen share, please? Thank you. So for our reading, we have a set of belief statements from our strategic plan and I'll read through these twice and you can follow along. And then we'll just take an opportunity and try to share out popcorn style. Just any thoughts or reflections that, that came to you while you were reading the statements. "We believe that it is important to be connected to the place we live." "We believe that global awareness broadens perspective and knowledge." "We believe that physical activity is valuable." "We believe that every voice deserves to be heard." "We believe that a culture of continuous improvement is beneficial." "We believe that student excellence requires investing in personnel." "We believe that it is important to be connected to the place we live." "We believe that global awareness broadens perspective and knowledge." "We believe that physical activity is valuable." "We believe that every voice deserves to be heard." "We believe that a culture of continuous improvement is beneficial." "We believe that student excellence requires investing in personnel." So again, just opportunity. Go ahead, Jenna, and hopefully with a small group, if you see someone talking, kind of wait for them to finish and then you might be able to get in before somebody else starts. Jenna?
Yeah. I, the first two statements about being connected to the place we live and the global awareness broadening perspective and knowledge are the two that resonate. Two statements that resonate to me, I was reflecting on one of the things that distinguished our virtual learning this spring was the opportunity that one of my children's teachers embraced, and that was to watch the rise of spring and have her students kind of keep a nature journal during, during the two months at the end of school. And it was a great way to connect students to, to the place that they live. And perhaps that happens in the brick and mortar setting and the conventional school setting too, but it was very apparent to me. And it was a daily, became a daily practice for one of my kids, which was great. And through this global pandemic, it's pretty hard to, to ignore the, the, the globalness of what's afflicting all of us. So I think that's something that will stick with our kids through their lives, that's for sure. How global our society's become.
Michelle. Um, the last statement stood out for me with the, at school ending here in Anderson this year and with our new changes in our personnel at Anderson for next year with Mr. Filardi and other, you know, changes, I'm excited to see.
There was a day where I think, you know, at six o'clock in the evening, I'd gotten all of 500 steps. And it was just interesting like how the, a lot of physical activity you have is kind of embedded into our daily routines. And with distance learning and distance work, we had to like be very conscious of trying to design and encourage ourselves and the people around us to have that activity for its physical and, you know, mental emotional benefits that it provides. It was just one of those things that just was driven home. As one of the things just kind of emphasized by this experience.
Um, I was looking at the one that we believe that a culture of continuous improvement is beneficial. I have to say throughout the schooling at home, there was lots of continuous improvement. With, with the teachers, it was nice to have them ask for feedback and kind of try to work with that and, and always make that improvement to make the kids' time schooling at home better, so.
Any final thoughts on our reading?
All right. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Connie, have we had anybody sign up for public comment or I'm not sure how I asked this question now? If it's Kestlin or Dan?
Well, all of us, all the three of us have ability to monitor that email account and we didn't receive a request for a public comment at this point. Again, if one comes into the email through the link that's on the, the board meeting, Kestlin will be able to monitor that and let us know that, yes, there's someone that wants to make a comment. If it's about an agenda item, we might be able to drop them in before you begin your discussion on that item. Or we'd be able to hold until, if it's not on an agenda item, hold until the end of the meeting.
All uses of CARES funding within the realm of education. And so really appreciate being able to work with Superintendent Polta and, and, and he's worked with Rena to consider appropriate and potential allowable and necessary expenditures. And they've identified a really good list and we've been working together on that list of expenses that could be taken care of out of the CARES funding. So the upcoming June budget will likely reflect that new approach of maintaining our commitment to education while also utilizing those CARES fundings to, to meet, to meet a portion of that commitment and in turn, better position the borough for next fiscal year by retaining general fund funds. So that's a big thing we've been working on and it shouldn't really affect it, your budget because our total contribution will be the same. It'll come from different areas. So I wanted to let you know that I really appreciate working with the administration on that and, and and it'll continue to be a work in progress as we go. Those monies should be expended by December 30th. And there's different tranches along the way. It's, it's, it's the beginning of, of putting these total $3.8 million to best use within our communities and that includes education. So with that, that's pretty much what I have for you. That's the latest update and I'd be happy to take any questions you might have.
Thank you, Clay. Anyone with questions for the mayor? Looks like we're a quiet bunch tonight, Clay.
And with that, I'll watch the rest on Facebook.
Right. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you. Have a good night.
All right, we'll move on to business item 6A. We had a couple of reports from Anderson and Peak. Does anyone have any questions regarding those that Dan possibly could expand on?
And I just again reiterate the comment that we, we've asked the administrators to kind of focus their time on the crises of the day and just those pretty intense needs that we have in supporting our students and our staff. So that's why we don't have all the reports.
Yeah, fully support that. Any questions for Dan? We are quiet tonight. All right, then. And I didn't see anything in the agenda, Dan, but was there anything under instructional coach? Nothing to add there? Okay.
I'd say as a, as a, maybe a tiny light into the work that's been done in my report. Look at the kind of list of just a lot of the professional development that we've done in those activities. That's been a big focus of Karen's work during this time is helping support that. As well as she helped coordinate and then help facilitate meeting that administrators had with Arkansas and John McCabellier yesterday and then a meeting, long meeting today and tomorrow with the instructional leadership team that I'll refer to and talk about a little bit in, in my report. And she's put a lot of time into structuring those for us to have them be as productive as possible and really helping us with kind of, at this point, starting to move us into some of the planning work for next year.
And lastly, anything regarding the sped report and questions for Dan or anything you wanted to highlight, Dan? Okay. We will move along. Going on to 7A, we did have a piece of correspondence. I thought it was a very nice letter. Something, kind of a good point to think about going forward. So appreciated that input. If anyone else has anything to add. Okay. Moving on to committee reports. We did have a finance committee report. I think we've read it, but I don't know, Kristen, if there was anything you wanted to add?
Not really. I guess the biggest, I mean, whether, I guess for the best, we're going to end with a surplus this year where we thought we were going to be at a deficit, which I think will be positive moving into the next year and just being able to mean some of that care, maintain some more of that carryover because we have an act, an access. So unless anybody had any questions, I thought it was pretty self-explanatory.
Thank you, Kristen. And at this point, we're up to the business manager's report. Do we have Rena on?
Yes, we do.
Excellent. Welcome, Rena.
Good evening, board.
Good evening, Rena.
Let's see. All right. I have my report here for this month and the report is as of April 30th. I'm going to jump to the second page right away because this is the page that shows the April 20th or 2020 actuals and appearances. So I'm, we're going to go to the second page. On the revenues portion, you will notice there are variances there because with all this COVID craziness, our interest on our repo account is affected and we, we budgeted for $80,000 for this year, which is already lower than the original amount that we budgeted. Now we're reducing that amount again by twenty something thousand dollars. Because for the month of April, we only earned $108 on our repo. And the, our bank started charging us with the bank fees. And we paid a bank fee of $61.08. So we actually made $40, $40 on our interest. And the state sources, it's just a difference on the, on the student count, it's just a small discrepancy there. And then if you notice that huge amount difference on the special revenue line item, that is because we got approved on the literacy grant. I showed, showed that difference there and it's just a small amount on our transportation grant. And then on our expenditures, you will start seeing some discrepancies. Most of them, they're overages. Were that, which means we're underspending. And the first one is instruction. It's because most of our literacy coach salaries and benefits are being covered by literacy grant and then we reduced our supplies and materials. We're not seeing all the budgeted amount for instructional supplies and materials will be used. So that's encoded in there, the ninety something thousand dollars. And then the correspondence, that's, that's $17,000 is just a an offset to school improvement grant, which is the salaries and benefits of our peak teachers. There are two peak teachers there that are called maybe not half of their salary, but a portion of their salaries or benefits are covered by that grant. And we're in the final stage of determining the balance of our unused or unspent allotment, student allotment account. So we will find that out soon. And for the special education, we, we're showing we're underspending that line item because in our original budget revision, we said that we're going to have an aid with benefits, but we ended up not replacing the FDE. It's just a portion of it without benefits. So we're showing an underspending on that line item. And the same thing with the support services of $70,000. We're not, we did not replace the tech assistant in Pete. So we're showing this discrepancy there. And then you will notice the district admin that has fifty something thousand dollars. Some of that, it's because our consultation with Mr. Lee Cabellier will be covered by literacy grant. And with all the canceled travel by our teachers and some staff, we're expecting that we're not going to use the strategic plan fund that we allotted. And then for operations and maintenance that has overged or we overspent $60,000 because of the fire suppression. And we're hoping that it will not have $75,000 more on that line item. Because if we foresee any more than $75,000, then we have to make a budget revision in June. And we're hoping we don't have to do that because we're expecting some expenditures that we've had already that we can offset with our COVID money, which is the CARES Act fund. And our student activities, there's discrepancy of twenty something dollars because of the student travel being canceled and including the staff, we were not seeing those budget to be used. And same thing with special fund grants. I adjusted it amount to 240. We're seeing 240 because of the literacy grant and although we're not using all our literacy grant, we, we know that we can carry over that amount. And, and if you want a detailed information or description of each line items, they're on the third page and then the explanation of the discrepancies on the fourth page. And then the fifth page is about the grants and I will start with transportation. That's the balance for that and this might change because of the COVID money that we'll, we'll get. The comprehensive or the literacy grant, that's, that's the expenses that we have as of the third quarter. And then the title one will be closed next month after the last payroll. Title 6B is already closed. Same thing with the section 619. Carl Perkins will be closed this month after I finalize all the reports. We've used all the $20,000 for our building trades and building. Title 2, we said that we're going to carry over eight hundred something, eight hundred something dollars. That was an error on my part. I found another expense that we can claim using our title 2. So that title 2 will be closed also. The, our SRS A that will be closed this month also, we've already withdrew our funds from the federal website. And title 7, which is Indian Ed, that will be closed also once I pay the last invoice from Andy Lee this month or also. And early learning, we already received the entire amount, which is the 59,453. We've already received that, I think, last week. They did not require us to report anything, but if they do, I have all the backups. Our teacher collaboration that will carry over next year, any unspent amount and same thing will with the school improvement that will be closed after next month's payroll. So pretty much using up our grants except for literacy grant and teacher collaboration, it's, it's, we're the fiscal agent for that one. So I'm not really worried and Karen has a lot of plans on using up the funds. So that's, that's the page for all of our grants. And the last page of my report is the fund in the bank balances. Our operating account has 1 million. And our repo account has almost 5.5 million. And like I said, our 5.5 million. And like I said earlier, we only earned $108 from our 5.5. And our operating account has 2.4 transportation fund. Then capital projects fund will be used as we start our Anderson roof construction pretty soon. And then our student allotment, that will not change. It will show like that till the end of June until we finalize all our current and carryover balances that are being spent by our students. And that's current year student allotment, that will change also after we finalize all our current year unspent and spent receipts and reimbursements from our parents. So all in all, we have almost 6.5 in our bank and fund balances. That's all for my report. If you have any questions.
Thank you, Rena. Anyone have questions for her?
Just a minor one. And maybe Dan could speak to this. There were, you know, we were doing two months of virtual school. There were some fuel savings presumably because the buildings went, the temperature controls went down, as I recall from hearing from Dan. Is there a figure visible here in the report about fuel savings?
That level of detail wouldn't show up. Sometimes Curtis, when he has some spare time, really likes kind of looking at stuff like that and seeing what those changes are.
Yeah.
I would say, well, there were some savings. They would not be super significant.
My question is related to what if we're doing virtual school all year next year? Is it sizable savings over the course of a nine-month school year?
I think it's sizable for like, when we think of our home budgets, like a fuel bill that we pay, like for Anderson, to like, you know, have the, those heating oil tanks filled up. It's a, it's a lot bigger than my bill at home. Looking at the total district budget, it's like, yeah, it's a little bit. I would expect that in those last couple of months, like the utilities savings might be a few thousand dollars.
And I will share what I see on our bills. Like, for example, our refuse bill every month. And this happened to me because when I saw our brick and mortar garbage pickups, we normally pay like $3,000 a month. And the last bill that we paid was $144. So that was a huge one.
Interesting. Anyone else with questions for Rena? All right then. Thank you very much, Rena.
Thank you.
Excellent. Okay, moving on to the Kentwell School Report. Did we have a presenter for that, Dan, or?
We did not. Jenny had a hiking date with her daughter this evening. And so she said, given everything else, that she apologized, but is deciding to prioritize that time.
Sounds like a fantastic choice. Did everyone have a chance to read over the report and board docs? Any questions that maybe Dan could answer? All right then. Moving on to Dan, the superintendent's report.
Before I start, I wanted to acknowledge that we'd lost our streaming for a while. And I see that we are streaming again and wanted to kind of see if Keston could give us just an update on that in terms of where we are and providing that link to the public yet.
We're not streaming. I mean, I, I keep, the Facebook link keeps crashing, so.
Okay. We are recording the meeting and can post the, the video of this. But I wanted to make sure that you're aware of that. And if there are any cautions about continuing a meeting without the direct public access.
Just based on this evening's agenda items, I don't, I don't see anything I would put in that hot topic category. How does the board feel about that?
The school calendar might have gotten some feedback. Do we have a sense, Keston, about how many, or Dan, how many people had tuned into Facebook, or is that not measurable?
I wasn't watching the link or you can see how many people are viewing. I would mention to the board that again, at the start, as of the start of the meeting, there were no, no requests to make public comment. And the only communication we received about any agenda item was the, the comment from Daniel Mayo on the school calendar. And we were streaming at that time. The, the public did have an opportunity to provide input on to those items. It's just right now, if we don't, until we post the recording, you're, you're making decisions outside of the, the public domain.
And we have had four, four little tiny snippets of meeting and no views as of yet.
But the recording in the end will be a complete recording. Is that true?
Not complete. We start, I noticed we weren't recording at the very beginning and we started the recording, I believe, with the mayor's report.
Yes, that's true.
Okay. Thank you. I think we'll proceed unless anyone sees a reason not to. Okay.
Okay. For my report, you have my written report that you had the opportunity to read through. I'll highlight a few things and add a few things to that as well. In the appreciations and congratulations, I really want to just continue to echo the congratulations to all of our graduates and in all of their families. You know, graduating from high school is a very big milestone and achievement. And it's an interesting one in our society because it is, you know, on this basis of your graduating high school, you've done something to a certain level of quality. And that's why you graduate. That's why you receive your diploma. But in our culture, it really is like our coming of age ceremony for people. It is kind of like that one kind of like public event where it's like that transition from being a child or an adolescent into being an adult. Which again, kind of is something that isn't about like, oh, you worked really hard at it necessarily like that. At some point is an age, some traditions have that at certain ages. You know, there is a recognition that you're entering that adult realm. In, in our culture, high school graduation really is, is that signification. So it's like this double congratulations. It's, it's yes, you've achieved this kind of course of study that we're validating. But more than that, like you're really being welcomed into our society as a full adult now, and that gets signified. And so it's kind of interesting and really appreciate and echo the thoughts and appreciations from Mayor Walker that, you know, that we were able to put together some ceremonies, different for each community, to provide the opportunity to really have that public honoring and welcoming of those new adults. I saw an email from, I think Tina Graham, who is helping with photographs at Tri Valley. And she mailed that out to the, you know, graduate families so they could see those and access the pictures. And it was addressed to like the, you know, new alumni, you know, it was really like the new, new adults in the community. It wasn't like the students or kids. And it just highlighted that transition. As a staff appreciation, I really want to highlight and just really thank Angel again, just in person. She really just rolled up her sleeves and helped so much with the delivery of goods and was kind of that face to a lot of the homes for the kids. And really, I think helped with, with a direct connection for a lot of people. And she even helped and volunteered some of her time at the end of school, helping deliver kits that we put together for some of our preschool age students in the borough and delivered those. And the comment that was shared with me was, you know, she and Alicia are going to the homes and one of the preschool age kids, like a three-year-old is kind of at the steps and calls out to like, you know, the brother that, oh, school's here for you. And the mom was like, no, no, no. They're here for you. This is yours. And just like the light that shined up in, in that young child's eyes. When Angel was there to say, this, this box of material is for you, where that child had watched for two months, things come home to, to their brother. It was like, now they had theirs. Some updates in the kind of thinking and work kind of specific to coronavirus. The Department of Education has kind of provided a very basic framework that they're referring to as SMART Start to help districts with planning. And it's a framework and it's kind of a small framework, but it really says, hey, we want districts to think and plan on like kind of three different scenarios. And again, health officials are working still on the definition of kind of the community health risk that defines each scenario. But to give us this, to say, plan for a scenario when there's a low risk of like virus transmission. Plan for a scenario that there's a medium risk for virus transmission and plan for a scenario that there's a high risk of virus transmission. And then the department has said, hey, within each of these, you're probably going to need to address like kind of these core issues, like how do you maintain learning during those different threads? Okay, then how do you maintain the structures that like a school needs to support learning? Schedules, transportation, kind of like your building level thing. And then districts have to look at what are the operational issues that have to continue and be, be in place to be able to provide this district-wide services in those different scenarios. So that's kind of the basic structure that the department is, is asking us to do. So it helps with some of the thinking. And it also helps with communication. So as a district's plan, they can share and we kind of know the language everybody's using as they, as they, they do the work. The approach that we're taking right now is looking at our strategic plan and specifically our work plan, which is our kind of focused intention for denailing learning underneath our strategic plan. And doing what we do at the end of every school year, which is reflect on what's, what progress has been made. What are the targets that we have for ourselves that we didn't quite reach? What did we, what can we learn from all of our experiences and the data that we collected throughout the year? And inform that plan for next year. So that we have an updated work plan, again, guiding that direction for us as we ensure challenging personalized learning. The kind of added part to it this year is saying, okay, as we work and focus on this, on our work plan, on the, on these big instructional pieces that we're moving for. Now let's also think, how do these goals need to be adjusted in those different scenarios? So one thing that we found during this previous two months was our work plan, our strategic plan still gave us an incredible focus in what we're referring to as like a through line through the experience. And that carried us from our pre-COVID time to our mid-COVID time. And it kept us anchored in terms of what was important for our district. And it did provide a lot of guidance and that, that kind of core pillar for us. And so we're focusing first on, let's make sure we've got that pillar. How does that pillar adjust as needed in those different environments? And then we'll start moving into the other layers of planning. You know, other kind of technical pieces of, okay, if we're in, in the school, like with everyone in the school in a very low risk environment, are there some general precautions we need to take? Okay, high-risk environment probably means we're doing something similar to distance learning. What changes and thoughts do we need to do to try to grow from this experience and make that better? If that's our high-risk model. And then coming together and saying, what's this? What's this in-between part? What might that look like? And I'm kind of hoping that we get some of that medical guidance because it's even like, well, what type of risks or exposures are we thinking about or planning for? Where I figure it's going to be some aspect of maybe some people in the buildings, but trying to figure out who that is or a schedule for that. Those are some of the things I think we're also going to see a lot of variance between different districts and potentially different schools in the districts. That different school sizes, student populations just provide different abilities to do kind of some of the spacing that can help contain and lower the risk of virus contamination. So that's, again, that's just an update on kind of the COVID planning process at this point. Some specifics on financial updates, you know, we, we looked at the, the numbers that we're looking at with Rena. We are again trying to hone in on that student allotment issue. That's kind of squirrely for us. As we say, okay, how much allotment has been spent this year versus how much could have been spent versus how much was budgeted? And then have the conversation with, okay, and how much student allotment carryover was spent? And how much do we project needs to be in that to be able to kind of have, what is our final end of year number relative to the due funds refund back to the district, general funds from the student allotment as was budgeted? Or there's actually additional monies need to come out of that general fund to make sure that we true up the student allotment carryover fund. And so it's really interesting kind of questions and kind of each time we, we spend some time thinking about it's like, oh, let's look at it from another side. And look at it from another side. So trying to just make sure we're, we're having all those kind of thoughts and views in place to, to have a solid number for that. In working with, with Mayor Walker, you heard him talk about, we are, did develop a list of what we feel are necessary and acceptable expenses that the borough could take on directly or, you know, directly through their CARES Act money. And we'd be looking to prioritize the use of the borough's CARES Act funding over the district's CARES Act funding. The borough again has about $3.8 million with a need to expend that by December of this, end of December this year. The much smaller amount of money that the district's receiving, $150,000 does not need to be spent until September 2022. So there's a lot of time for us to identify expenses for that, those monies. At this point, we've given Mayor Walker a list of about $750,000 of expenses. And doing another look through to see, can we identify some more? The kind of question and thoughts that, that Clay and I have are kind of like, so kind of the more technical pieces of what does this look like? And from the borough's side, it might look like they amend their budget and actually lower the local contribution on their operating budget. While maybe in the same meeting or in a meeting soon afterwards, you know, approve like that list of $750,000 of expenses through their CARES Act fund. So the purpose of working together is to say, okay, this is the level of funding. And kind of help the borough figure out how to source that. Where if we feel if we get that same level, that keeps our planning in place for operations. And trying to just make sure that we have kind of the accounting in line. And I think we did some work today between Rena and I, and think that we're comfortable with, we know how to move forward with the budget approval aspect from that we have to send to DED by the end of June. And so it's good to be able to move forward with that. And I do echo what Mayor Walker said. It's, it's very fortunate that we have a positive relationship with the borough and are able to really work through this in a collaborative measure that, you know, truly helps our, our community in, in all aspects of the community and that we're not fighting and squabbling over, over, over monies at this point. Do you want to mention just a small thing with school grants? We will receive a small grant from the Department of Education for $35,000 next year. It's directed for Peak and it's a result of Peak being in one of the lower tiers in the system of school success. They're a targeted school due to performance issues with our English language learners. And so those monies would be directed at structures and opportunities to try and improve that, that growth in those students. Kind of similar to the work then grant that we received for Peak to try to address graduation rates in the last couple of years. Moving to facilities in my report, probably the key thing I really want to highlight you two is that the coal boiler at Tri Valley overheated due to a failure of one of the emergency shut-off switches. And the system got so hot that it boiled glycol and came very close to exploding. And if that would have happened, we would have had serious risk of injury and very possibly loss of life had it, had it actually blown up. Luckily, secondary emergency shut-off switch did. Luckily, secondary emergency shut off switch did activate and turn the system off. And that then allowed Curtis to go in and get some valves open and disperse some of the heat out of the, out of the system. They, once it got cooled down, were able to go through and have checked all of the piping for any leaks or damage that happened. They found a couple of small leaks that they can repair. Once that's taken care of, they're going to power up the fuel oil boiler on the elementary side. Bring those heating pipes back up to temperature. Check them again to see if there's any leaks or damages now that it's back up to temperature. And then start working on replacing those emergency shut offs. And trying to make sure that those things are up to date to, so we don't have this type of near failure and near catastrophe again. It was, I was not at the school. It was discovered by one of our workers has just heard the banging and clanging in the pipes. And we were able to get over there. And again, luckily the, the secondary switch did turn on. But again, not until the system itself got hot, hot enough to boil, start boiling the glycol in the pipes. Update on the Anderson Roof Project, I have signed that contract. How about I go through and then we'll take the questions, Jenna? On the Anderson Roof Project, we have signed a contract with our construction company, Interior Alaska Roofs. And this is the company that did the campwell roof. So we're very happy to have them working with us again. They did very good work and we're a pleasure to work with as well. The construction will be done in two phases with two of the roof sections being completed this summer and then the final section being completed next year. And then an update on the fire suppression system for the Tri Valley server room. That's going to be installed in the, in the next couple of weeks. And the water based system will have the sprinkler heads replaced and reinstalled with a, with wet sprinkler heads still, which activate at a much higher temperature. And so your initial fire suppression in that room will be the chemical dry suppressant. But if fire continues, then you still have the water system that would activate and put out the fire because the dry system is a, it's going to fire once. And so if it doesn't work, we still need something to put out a fire. A couple of things on the professional development. I included as an attachment, a history, a chat history from our last kind of day of professional development, which is really a reflection on our process. And the chat history is a record of the greeting that we did. And we, we came together for a fairly short amount of time. And the greeting that I asked people to do, since there are so many of us there, it was district wide, all of our staff was simply to thank someone by name for something specific that they did during this time. And just gave staff time to just engage in that opportunity to recognize each other by name. And then to specifically thank people. And when you look at that, you, I think, really see just all the different ways that we supported each other throughout this entire time. And when I looked at that, I said, you know, that's an important record, I think, to share just how how collegial and collaborative everybody was during this time. Couple of personnel updates with our certified staff, I did approve an additional optional workday for each of our teachers in brick and mortar, given kind of the disruptions to their rooms and transitions to home and trying to get back into the rooms and prepare stuff for the summer. We felt it was appropriate to recognize that. And so we do have a form that teachers are filling out, just basically saying, hey, here's the extra day I worked. And then we're going to put that into their June, into the June payroll. With classified staff, I do just want to recognize Nicole Allard, who's leaving us at this point in time. She resigned with an effective date, which ended up being pretty close to the beginning of our distance learning. And she was able to coordinate times with her new employer. And was able to continue helping serve our students through the end of the school year. So we appreciate her adjusting her schedule and wish her well as she moves into her new work. Also just want to put a note that in regards to temporary staff that we generally hire in the summer for help with maintenance or security, we decided not to hire new staff members and just as it means, again, kind of minimizing interaction with different people. We are extending and putting an offer to extend a couple of part-time staff members' hours to help with that work. And felt that that didn't increase our, kind of that person-to-person contact risk with, with the uncertainty at this time. Well, the other thing on classified staff, and you notice it in an action item on the rehire notices. We did have some communication with Ivana Everlinkova, who's been on long-term leave without pay for the majority of this year. While her exact return date to the Healy and Denali is not completely certain. She is anticipating returning towards the end of the summer and looking forward to working with us again. And her leave date is through September 12th, I believe. But she's not quite sure if she's going to make it back before then or not. But we'll be happy to have her whenever she shows up. Comment from just superintendent meetings, I'd like to share just kind of like a, maybe a bit more of a personal thing that my mentee Cassandra Bennett in the UPED School District. I sat with the program director of her superintendent endorsement program. And we completed the overall rubric for her. And we all agreed that yes, she meets the standards to be a superintendent in the state of Alaska. And we'll be receiving that endorsement from the university and the state of Alaska. So very happy with that. Given kind of a lot of challenges in that district, we are talking and looking to continue that mentor-mentee relationship for another year. But also expecting those hours to, to reduce as she gets kind of more comfortable into the position. And hopefully has a few fewer fires to be putting out, considering the work that she did there this year. Something that wasn't in the report that I do want to mention and I highlighted it when I started speaking on the kind of appreciations with the help that Angel gave delivering our preschool kids. We went to distance learning, you know, they really disrupted our preschool programming that we were doing. And we kind of did a quick revamp to the intention of that grant and the state itself said, I'm here, just take the money in the grant and don't worry about reporting it, like just we'll trust you'll do good thing. And we said, awesome. And we said, all right, distance learning preschool, what do we do? Let's get some like kits of materials, like reading materials and learning activities and get those home. So that families have those just as resources. And we said, okay. And I said, you know what? Send it to everybody. Everybody in our borough, in the preschool age, then even if they weren't like registered as preschool with us, let's get these materials to everybody we can. So kind of late, we put together orders for kits with the intention to, to make kits for children like birth through age one ages and then kits ages two through three and then four through five. Unfortunately, didn't receive materials for the zero through one yet. So those could still be coming out. And we had to do some quick adjustments to kind of redistribute some things for the two, three and four or five. But we were able to distribute those kits to everybody that, again, we could identify and get contact with that, that wanted those kits with, they'd registered for our preschool or not. And it's something that I hope that we're able to continue, whether with the preschool grant or other things. I think it's a great way to support early learning overall. And I'd say not a huge expense, though, though it is an expense. Hopefully we can find again, continuous supports for that. I think it's a great thing to be able to do. The other thing that I did want to mention, just kind of like as a, as an awareness, I've approved this spring, three different research projects in partnership with universities to happen with DBSD staff. And one of those was approving a project led by Jen Jacobson out of Ni-Nana as part of his PhD program. Another one was one that Karen Martin was working on in her program. And then in working with Karen again, and then Uta Cotton, who's a professor of education at University of Alaska Fairbanks. Is the spouse of one of our teachers, Uva Hoffman in Anderson. And myself are actually doing a research project with intent of publishing an article looking at our district's adjustments to go into distance learning and try to kind of record those experiences. And, you know, try to publish a scholarly article about these so that we can share out the experiences more broadly. And, you know, we're kind of an interesting place in that we're pretty rural, but we have this weird connectivity thing. You know, so we have like a really unique, unique experience that, that we feel there is some value to put into the, the research literature for people to be able to see. And with that, entertain any questions?
Thank you, Dan. Any questions for Dan?
Thanks for that report, Dan. Cool to learn about the research projects. I'm going to scroll back to the coal boiler at Tri Valley. Is there any thoughts about why it overheated in the first place?
So, so we're running and heating the school, just keeping it on a general warmish but cool level. And just like, you know, home heating systems, you know, kind of heat up and then turn off and then heat, you know, then turn back on automatically. There are, you know, heat switches in the systems that say, okay, the, the main system or parts of the system have hit a temperature, you know, turn off, you know, in our homes, our thermostats hits 68 degrees, it turns off. There are also kind of emergency backups that say, okay, but it says it's not 68 degrees yet. But you're about to like melt the metal. You know, for example, so there are emergency shut offs that say, hey, ignore what the thermostat's telling you. Turn this system off. That failed.
So, but the thermostats failed also then?
Yeah. Yeah, we haven't been able to kind of go through the full system and go, okay, what are the, in a sense, confirming all the sensors? And kind of being able to yet trace out, well, what was it that caused the, the, you know, probably multiple failures that let the boiler get to that heating point? We know that the, that the emergency shut off on the one, on the system itself that did not turn off or like, okay, that was supposed to turn off when it hit 180 degrees. Glycol boils around like 250, 260 degrees. So get rid of it and get a new one in there. And then the one that did turn off, turned off, it's supposed to turn off at 200 degrees. And we're like, hmm, seems like that was exceeded too. So let's replace that. Let's look at, are they located in the right place? You know, or do we need to locate emergency shut offs? Do they need to take a temperature in a different part of the system? You know, maybe their location was the correct, the temperature that they were operating on, but other parts were having that heating issue. So there are a series of things that we, we haven't had the, the, the time yet to, to go through and just that step-by-step fashion.
Before you Vern, I think Nikki had a question.
Oh, it was just on, and the article that you're going to write about our district's ability to transition into distance learning. Is that just a, you authoring that or are you in partnership with like Karen? I'm just curious.
The fact that I'm involved, I think is more, I don't know, almost out of a kindness of Karen and Uta. And maybe wanting to involve me in it and I'd be very interested in it as would be kind of my first formal like educational research article. I think in the listing of authors, scientific authors are listed with like the senior author coming last. I'm pretty sure my name will be first.
Or maybe they'll be merciful.
Just emphasize the senior authors come last. They might put mine and then a lot of space and then their names.
I think that's great. I'm glad to hear that.
Okay, we're back to the boiler, Dan. Two questions, the first one being, does the state inspect that boiler annually then?
I'm not sure. I did talk with Curtis.
With boilers before, we used to have DOT or I mean, Department of, somebody else would come and inspect our boilers. And then the other one is, do we have to report this to the state?
I'm not sure that we do. And I'm thinking now that what I'll do is try to get a more detailed report from Curtis. And possibly have him be present at the next board meeting, which, which might not be until August. But to try to answer some of those questions. But your specific questions Vern were. But if you do annual inspections?
By the state. Inspector out to all over any public boiler at all?
And see, I would think with the other things that I see the state demand inspections on, usually they demand that we have it done commercially. Like our fire protective equipment, our fire extinguishers are inspected annually. We contract with Taylor Fire to do that. So, but we'll look into that. And then the report.
Is this reportable? That's what I'm curious about.
And, and my initial thought, I can confirm, but my initial thought on the report is no, because there was no injury. If there was an injury, you do have to report those to OSHA.
I see Dan's point though, because sometimes there are like near miss reports that are required.
And then Jenna, your questions were on kind of like wanting, I need to hear the, the cascade of like, you know, the kind of failure points. What did we find? What did we do?
Anyone else with questions for Dan?
Okay, so my question is regarding the framework for next year's school. When is it expected to have all that information ready? On the, you know, the levels of risk and what, what our expectations will be once we change levels or whatever.
Yeah, the department hasn't told, given us a date like by which they want that information in place. And at this point, we don't have a date by which we've said we want to complete that work. In the next, I think over two and three weeks, the state is holding some webinars to, to bring people together to, to kind of do some sharing, shared thinking on some of the different, different areas that they're recommending that the planning happen on. At this point, like I, I don't think that we'd have something publishable for several weeks, possibly through, towards the end of June. And that's just having the time to kind of go through layers of planning, identifying some things that are just like, hey, these are technical pieces. We just need one or two people just boom, boom, boom. Plan this out. Hey, this is a big thing that maybe we need broader input on. Let, let's look for who should be providing input or part of this discussion. Kind of then there's layers of communication involved with that, bringing that back, trying to put everything together, doing that kind of review. Does this, you know, let it sit with it for a few days and then say, okay, this is what we're going to try to put in place.
Okay, so my next question would be, do you have a sort of like a committee that is helping work on this or?
Right now, and with the work that we're doing right now on the kind of that, that focused piece that, that I was sharing on our work plan and the Denali learning and the strategic plan. The group looking at that right now is the instructional leadership team. And that is your, your administrators, your instructional coach. And then there are five teachers that are members of that team. Today, we had two of those members be able to commit some time in the summer for that. And so that team's looking at that. And then as we move into the planning pieces, it starts to be more of like, kind of like asking that, that question that you're asking and making decisions about it, like who are the right people to engage in that work? Where right now we're saying, okay, we're going to be starting kind of with that administrative level. Because some of it is just kind of like technical weeds. Where other things are like, oh, what? You know, is, is there a better kind of instructional schedule that we might have with distance learning, like in that high risk environment? Okay, well, there's a lot more input that we can gather from that and other people that we'd want to involve in that. So it's looking at, as we do kind of the rounds and layers of planning to take and identify the decisions and say, okay, who should be involved in those discussions? So we don't have, in a sense, those different groups set up at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else with questions for Dan? Okay, thank you, Dan.
You're welcome.
And we have no old business from last meeting. Before we move on to new business, I will ask if anyone needs a quick add ease for a few minutes. Jenna, sold. All right. I bet everybody come back at eight 30. That gives us four minutes. Will that do?
And we are live again on Facebook.
Okay, I'm just gonna put myself on mute. I see two of us don't have video on. Are we all back or? Hey, Michelle. That's okay. I think that's all. Is that losing my mind? Are we all back here? Counting my squares. I don't like the way Zoom moves them around when we come back on and off. I've never figured out how to pin them in certain places.
Krista's gone.
Yeah, I see that. You're all in different places now. Hey, Krista.
There you go.
Okay. Moving on then with business item nine, a classified rehires. Jenna, could you lead us through this motion, please?
Yes, I will. I move to approve the administration to offer rehire notices to the classified employees for the 2020, 2021 school year. Amanda Austin, Holly Bai, Kimberly Cassell, Taylor, Eli McClaskey, Mark Faneen, Jennifer Graham, Jennifer Gross, Chantel Hammond, Ivana Haber-Lukova, Angel Hayes, Diana Hararevich, Annie Hiers, Dwight Hiers, Brittany Jameson, Jacey Johnson, Bethany Jones, Donna Jones, Carrie Keith, Joanne Kovach, Michelle Kovach, Stacy Kovach, Justin Mason, Sierra Montez, Melissa Nelson, Darla Soto, Eric Story, Latisha Stratton, Wendy Thorne, Martha Tomio, Sarah Walker, Debbie Weider, Caitlin White soul, Jared Williams and Jeremy Wolfe.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on this item? Dan, yes?
So we are intending to offer rehire notices to all of our classified staff. I do want to acknowledge to the board that due to our distance learning and everybody working at home, we did not complete most of the formal evaluations of our staff. I directed the administrators to do those that needed to be done in, in order to record can any concerns that were happening. And by our contract, any evaluation that was not completed, I believe by May 15th is considered satisfactory. So I said, use your time, focus on either anyone who you needed to talk to about unsatisfactory performance or really who in other means needed that conversation as if there's still some significant areas of concern, even if it wasn't to that kind of different overall descriptive level. And so they took that to heart. They did not complete all of the evaluations. I believe that they did offer at least tried or hopes to offer kind of that opportunity to provide that feedback. But again, we just had to kind of reprioritize the, kind of the timings and the efforts of our work.
Thank you. Anyone else with questions or comments? All right then. Connie, I think we're ready for a roll call vote.
Okay. Jenna Hamm?
Yes.
Trista Davis?
Yes.
Michelle Nelson?
Yes.
Ricky Demirz?
Yes.
Vernon Carlson?
Think you're on mute, Vern?
Yes.
Kristen Rad.
Yes.
James Tenge.
Yes, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to nine B. Trista, could you take this item on business, please?
Yes. Get back over here. Okay, I move to affirm the SY 2021 school year calendar as presented.
Second.
Yes, Dan.
So the intent of bringing the school calendar back to you is to really give the board the opportunity to, to look at and kind of ask the question. Are you happy with the start and stop dates of the school year? Are you happy with the location of spring break? Are you happy with the location of in-service dates? That when you're looking at calendars before is really the conversation of do we do our traditional calendar or do a modified calendar? So you're really looking at that question where we didn't kind of enter into that second level of discussion about, okay, with that traditional calendar are all those little details the way you want it? And you saw the communication from Danielle Mayo with her recommendation. But I think like the things that you might want to consider would be, you know, the start date on the calendar for students is August 12th, the end date is May 20th. That's traditionally what we do. Again, there's survey input that said people like a later start and getting out earlier. I'm not quite sure how to do that, but that was the input that was provided in the survey. There's, I think, often discussion about, you know, do you put the spring break kind of concurrent with large districts in the state? Or do you put it asynchronous to those districts in the state? Feedback on that was, if I remember, split about kind of 40, 40 within a 20% going do something different or no spring break or then make a difference. In other years, I think we've seen a higher percentage of feedback say that they tend to prefer concurrent with the other districts, large districts in the state for some of the student opportunities that happen where the people that say have it separate is, you know, it's kind of nice to be able to go do stuff without all those Anchorage and Fairbanks kids running around or it's a lot easier to get a flight somewhere if no one else is trying to fly at that time. That's kind of the, the thought point that right now the calendar is presented has spring break, March 8th through 12th. So I'd say a little bit earlier than normal, but that is concurrent with Anchorage, Matsu and Fairbanks school districts. This year we were asynchronous to, we were the week after Anchorage. And then the question on in services. Right now there are four in services placed on Mondays. Two of those Mondays are federal holidays that traditionally have had a lot of student absences in the Healy area related to community hockey. Those are the January and February in services. But then the other in services that are on Mondays, there's one in early October and one in mid April that right now are scheduled on this calendar on Mondays. So so if you want to consider such a change, someone could move to amend the calendar. And that would then allow kind of a more specific discussion as to whether or not the board as a whole would like to move forward with that possible change.
Does changing those two Mondays that you talked about in October and April, does that make a difference in what you already have planned for in services?
No, what we've done with the Monday in service, we don't have any like set firm plans for them for next year. So direct answer to your question is no, wouldn't change any firm plan. When we held them in service on Monday, whether we did it with internal work only, or if we brought in our consultant, Missraul Calaguerre to work with us, we have that in-service Monday. And then we're able to kind of do the follow through work during the week and then even still kind of cap off the week with our professional collaborative time kind of bookending a really solid week. That's the structure that we put in place when we went to that Monday in-service model.
Okay.
I'd like to just highlight the point too, Dan, that as you and I were discussing calendar issues and things earlier. I think we both acknowledge the fact that more than ever this year, we may just be, we may just need to be prepared to approach the calendar with some flexibility with all the unknowns about where we may be headed in this next year. So we may approve one thing tonight and then have to amend or do something down the road as things evolve.
It would be good regardless of whether you simply affirm the structure in place or make adjustments. Whatever you do tonight, probably be good if you just think this is the provisional calendar.
So do you want to discuss it now? If we have questions or comments about it, or is it better to make a motion and then discuss it?
In pure like Parliament Roberts rules parliamentary procedure thing, you should have a motion on the floor in order to have a discussion.
Because the current motion is just to affirm calendar.
Discuss it, but it's kind of like, that's kind of the parameter of your discussion. So you could say, yeah, do you want to affirm it or do you want to, you know, move October 5th in service to October 16th, the Friday and move one in April to April 16th on a Friday.
I think we could discuss that within the framework of this motion and should that start leading towards an actual decision, we would have to make a new motion, but.
Thanks, James. I'll put it out there that I would, I, I know if there are sporting events, maybe October is busier than April. So as, as a gesture, in reference to the comment, public comment that we received, changing the October 5th in-service day to a Friday, the ninth or the sixth. Might be appropriate. I don't know how many sports are still going on in April.
Just track.
Track and field, yeah.
Um, I guess I would also question where spring break is put. I know it was pretty divided, but if there is state basketball, you have high school kids possibly missing almost two weeks of school with the spring break and then you know, several days for a state basketball tournament, just you never know if they're going to go, you never, you never know, but I would, I would, if we're, if we're worried about student contact days and keeping kids in school longer, that seems to be like a an opposite of what we're trying to do.
And when is that?
I think it's the following week. I think that's what I read in the survey anyway, is that state basketball was the following week. 17th, 18th, 19th are right in there. So it just seemed like a lot of the comments were keeping kids in school as much as possible. Limiting time in which they were away from school. So changing in-service days or even that spring break. Maybe something to consider.
Yes, Trista.
Another thing that I don't know if it's going to be something that we run into at the beginning of school. But I, I look at the calendar and I think we could even move back the start date and end date by a week. Because you're still, it looks like Memorial Day is the 31st of May. So you would still be in school up until that weekend and then you would be out before Memorial Day. up until that weekend, and then you would be out before Memorial Day. So I think if we're running into issues of starting a school, that might be another option.
These, just commenting back or information back to Kristen's comment on basketball tournament in the 2021 school year, the 18A basketball, state basketball tournament is March 17th through 20th.
Anyone feel strongly enough about any of these comments to possibly make a motion to amend?
I think I would, I would second what, the comments that have already been made and offer a motion to move spring break in March in the 2020, 2021 school calendar to the week of March 15th, and the October 5 in-service to either the 9th or the 16th. Or do I need to choose one? To the 16th?
Do I have a second?
Second.
We can discuss this further.
Do we need to pick a day in October?
Yeah.
Kristen, yes.
I thought I heard the 16th.
I did say the 16th.
Yeah.
Oh, the 9th, sorry. Because you had said the 16th for some reason, Dan.
Yes. And if it's seconded, I can explain it more.
It was seconded.
Got a second.
So I took the 16th. When we put together the modified calendar, one of the things that we did, again, the modified calendar was saying, hey, let's look at additional professional development days, and let's place those on days that have kind of known or traditional high student activity travel. So I didn't go back to that list of student activity things. What I did when looking at the impact of like moving the in-services as a potential was to say, well, what did we do in the modified calendar where we designed with that intent? And we were attending school on October the 9th in that version, but had in-service on the 16th, which told me that the 16th would have traditionally high student activity travel as opposed to the 9th. That was why I made the recommendation that if you wanted to, you make the 16th would be a more logical date.
Yeah.
I do think that there's volleyball tournaments tentatively scheduled if we even do anything on both of those weekends, I think. But those are very tentative, and who knows what's going to really happen kind of schedules, so.
I will, I will say that, you know, a lot of park service, I don't know if this came out in the comments, maybe I don't remember seeing it, but a lot of park service employees work a four-day week of Fortins and have Fridays off. So that might be part of our, part of what's at play here in student attendance. So more Fridays without schools may be a better thing for that sector.
Anyone else would come or question? Everyone feel comfortable taking a vote on the amended calendar?
I think technically you'd vote on the amendment.
That, that's what I mean, on the amendment. Connie, could you do a roll call on the amendment, please?
Vernon Carlson?
Yes.
Nikki Demirz?
No.
Trista Davis?
No.
Michelle Nelson?
Yes.
Kristen Randall?
Yes.
Jenna Hamm?
Yes.
James Tench?
Yes, yes. I was thinking. So I believe that passes, is it seven? No, six to two? No. How many of us are there total?
Five to two.
I think we had two noes. I got that part. Five to two, thank you.
Five to two, and your bylaws and policies establish that for a motion to pass must be a pass by a majority of the board in five, not just majority of those present. So this motion passes.
That's what I thought. Thank you, Dan, clarification. So we have the calendar as amended now. Any further discussion? All right, no, if there are no other questions, then Connie, if you could do a roll call on the calendar as amended?
Jenna Hamm?
Yes.
Kristen Randall?
Yes.
Michelle Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Nikki Demirz?
Yes.
Vernon Carlson?
Yes.
James Tench?
Yes, motion passes unanimously. Okay. Michelle, could you take business item nine C, please? The district course guide?
Hold on, it's not opening, hold on.
Sorry to put you on the spot, Michelle.
No, that's okay. My board docs just froze.
I've had that happen a few times if I don't poke it enough.
Yeah, my board docs is not working.
Trista, would you mind going ahead and taking this item?
Did you say me or Kristen?
You, I'm sorry, Trista.
Okay, I got to work, sorry.
Oh, never mind. Thank you, Michelle.
I moved to adopt the DBSD 2021 to 2021, or sorry, 2020 to 2021 course guide.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion or Dan, do you have? Go ahead.
I'll just do, do a quick verbal summary that you also have in writing from Alicia Ferguson, our curriculum coordinator. So this is an annual kind of adoption that you do, and really you're adopting kind of like some small changes to our course guide, which is just our offerings to our students. There are five things that this approval would include into the course guide. The first thing is it would place all of the UAF Advantage online courses as part of DBSD's course guide. So provide access to all of these college courses for students as part of their DBSD program of study. They still have to qualify for that course with the qualifications from UAF, but they'd be able to take that like in lieu of a course that we might be offering on campus. It takes two courses that we piloted this year and puts them from the piloting program into a formal ongoing course. And those two courses are an introduction to logic course that was used this year, and also an exploring computer science course that was used this year. Approving this course guide will also incorporate a dual credit course on Western civilization, and that being offered through a partnership and written agreement with Prince William Sound College, where one of our teachers will be teaching the course on campus here, and it will receive credit both from us as a high school course and from Prince William Sound College as a college-level course. And then it also takes a high school physics class, and in a sense activates the course. We had it in the past, and we simply didn't instruct that for a couple of years. So we moved it out of the course guide and put it into just kind of a historical holding place, and we're just reactivating that course that we had in the past. So those are the five things that you would be doing by adopting the course guide. If you do have additional questions, then I would ask Alicia Ferguson to join in to help answer those.
Anyone have further questions? Okay, then I think we're ready for a roll call vote, Connie. Did you hear me, Connie? I think you're on mute.
Nikki Demirz?
Yes.
Vernon Carlson?
Yes.
Trista Davis?
Yes.
Kristen Randall?
Yes.
Jenna Hamm?
Yes.
Michelle Nelson?
Yes.
James Tench?
Yes, motion passes unanimously. All right, we will move on to business item nine D. Trista, could you take this, please?
Yes. Okay. I have moved to adopt the K through eight English Language Arts curriculum material for the 2020, 2021 school year.
Second.
Anything to add on this, Dan?
A little bit. And then again, if there's some further and deeper questions, we'd ask either Alicia Ferguson to join us, or possibly Karen Martin, who also worked on the recommendation for adopting these materials, as well as a group of teachers that were involved in the review. Main part of the recommendation is to approve as the use of kind of like core instruction materials for our K through eight English Language Arts instruction materials from EL education. And again, that's our big thought partner with Denali Learning. So we had a group of teachers this year, again, establish criteria, to take a look at curriculum and look kind of deeply at this material. And we had some teachers piloting and working on some different parts that are accessible online. And the recommendation came from our process, and we kind of pushed this part of the process quickly, because we kind of thought, we kind of knew how things were going to go with our work already with EL education. But we still wanted to have that formal time for teachers to sit down and really ask the questions about the curriculum materials. And we're able to affirm that, yes, these materials would be in line with our work under our strategic plan and Denali Learning, and would really help kind of move forward in a lot of ways. And so that's the core recommendation is to adopt those materials so we can move into purchasing. And a lot of the materials are actually accessible online. You have to take them, download them, and then like print stuff out. And so this would be get published sets of those materials. Other kind of smaller parts of the recommendation is to continue some of our online subscriptions for other kind of core resources that we use in grades like six through 12, and continue those for another year. And next year, we're going into that kind of deeper kind of materials review with, with that group of teachers and looking at those courses. And then some other subscriptions, again, for generally lower level or lower grade levels. Who is actually going to be to just discontinue some of the online subscriptions and let those resources expire as they be replaced with the EL materials.
Any questions for Dan? Or others?
Vern, I don't really have a question. I just got a basically a compliment, just making it easy for me to, this is one of my big questions I've had for a long time. And I realized we don't touch on this very often, but I actually kind of understand what the term curriculum means. Thank you.
Thank you, Vern. Anyone else? I think we're ready for a roll call vote, Connie.
Okay. Michelle Nelson?
Yes.
Nikki Demirz?
Yes.
Vernon Carlson?
Yes.
Trista Davis?
Yes.
Jenna Hamm?
Yes.
Kristen Randall?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes unanimously. Kristen, could you take nine E, please? Our board summer meeting schedule?
Yes. I moved to cancel the regular monthly scheduled June and July school board meetings.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Trista. Dan and I debated this a little bit, but kind of ultimately thought, well, we can call a special meeting if we need to. But you have a question, Jen?
I, yeah, I was just, just wondering along, probably along the same lines that you and Dan discussed about the advisability of letting go of July, given that we'll know a whole lot more hopefully by then about what the school year is going to look like.
And we may have to try to call a meeting if we actually know something, then. I just kind of leaned to the side of giving us a little more leeway for summertime with families and such. And if we have to have a meeting, we'll come together.
Sure.
Yes, Vern.
Ironically, this year, I can't support canceling either. I think we should have them both held as placeholders, and I'll be kind of voting appropriately that, because I just, in light of what we don't know, I think we should be planning.
Understood. Anyone else? Yes, Nikki?
I feel the same as Vern, and I'm going to do the same.
Any other discussion?
Do you think there will be much to discuss in June? I mean, I can see July. I mean, it's a never-changing thing. I mean, I deal with it every day at work, so I understand that. I just.
It's a fair question, and we could amend this motion to just address June versus June and July together.
You know, if we have the meeting scheduled, and there's not, again, much business, you'd basically, you'd receive the reports, and that would conclude the meeting. And the reports would probably be, hopefully, like the reports would be a bit shorter. I'd have less to talk about, hopefully. And the meetings wouldn't take very long.
I mean, just in thinking about what, you know, with all the changes that are going to happen, I would almost, I could see maybe a point of having one early July, and then you might have to have one late July and then mid-August, if it gets down to all of that, that if we're having to make choices or decisions or move on different things. I don't know. Just, just thinking of what could all transpire in between now and then, hoping for the best that we'll just go back to normal and go back to school.
I agree.
I would certainly support an amendment to this.
Um, I will actually do that. Let me get on here. I would like to make a motion to, do I need to amend it or just make a second motion? Okay.
I think an amendment is appropriate with this.
Okay, I'd like to make an amendment to only cancel the June school board meeting?
Second.
Any further discussion, or can we vote on this? Could you do a roll call, please, Connie?
Trista Davis?
Yes.
Jenna Hamm?
Yes.
Nikki Demirz?
No.
Vernon Carlson?
No. No.
Randall?
Yes.
Michelle Nelson?
Yes.
James Tensh?
Yes. Motion passes five to two, the amendment. So we're back to the motion as amended, only cancel in June. So any further discussion or are we ready to vote on this? Roll call, please, Connie.
Michelle Nelson?
Okay, just clarification. Now we're voting on the amendment for to cancel June only. Okay, yes.
You amended the motion to remove June or return with like to remove the cancellation of July. So that you don't cancel June since you're amending the motion that you you passed the amendment. So now the main motion is pretty similar to what you just passed where you're in a sense affirming that the main motion, which would cancel the June meeting would be then formally adopted through the main motion. It is a bit redundant.
I agree, but but the note, the motion, the original motion was on the floor, so.
So, yes.
Kristen Randall?
Yes.
Vernon Carlson?
No.
Nikki Demirz?
No.
Jenna Hamm?
Yes.
Trista Davis?
Yes.
James Tensh?
I'm on the fence. I think I'm going to go with yes. So the motion passes five to two. I will just say that to assure everyone, we can call a meeting should information or something we have to come up and make a decision on come forward, so. Okay. At this point, I'll need a motion to go into executive session. Nikki, could I have you take this item?
I move to go into executive session in order to discuss a matter personnel for which deliberative records are not subject to public disclosure.
Second.
Guess we'll need a roll call vote on this, Connie. Did you have something, Vern?
No, 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 sorry.
No, it's just checking.
Jenna Hamm? Jenna Hamm?
Yes.
Trista Davis?
Yes.
Michelle Nelson?
Yes.
Nikki Demirz?
Yes.
Vernon Carlson?
Yes.
Kristen Randall?
Yes.
James Tensh?
Yes, motion passes unanimously and I think will be moved into a breakout room. Is that right?
Yeah, Keston, can you move the board members and myself into a breakout room and also then assure that it is that breakout room is not being livestreamed nor recorded?
Nikki, would you like to make the motion to come out of executive session?
Sure. I move to come out of executive session and return to regular session.
Second.
And a roll call, please, Connie.
That on mute. Vernon Carlson?
Yes.
Nikki Demirz?
Yes.
Trista Davis?
Yes.
Michelle Nelson?
Yes.
Kristen Randall?
Yes.
Jenna Hamm?
Yes.
James Tensh?
Yes, motion passes unanimously. Now on a related topic, Vern, would you take business item nine G regarding the long-term leave?
Yes. I move to grant Christie Eli Percy long-term leave without pay from July first, 2020 through December 31st, 2020.
Second.
And unless there's any discussion, I think Connie, we're ready to vote.
Nikki Demirz?
Yes.
Vernon Carlson?
Yes.
Trista Davis?
Yes.
Kristen Randall?
Yes.
Jenna Hamm?
Yes.
Michelle Nelson?
Yes.
James Tensh?
Yes, motion passes unanimously. Kristen, could you take business item nine H regarding the administrative contracts?
Yes. I move to reissue the following administrative and exempt contracts. Alicia Ferguson, Eric Filardi, Nathan Pitt, Jenny Mason, Garen Martin, and Rena. Both of them. I think never say that.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
If there's any discussion on this, I believe we're ready for a vote here as well, Connie.
Michelle Nelson?
Yes.
Nikki Demirz?
Yes.
Don Adams, oh, sorry, Vernon Carlson?
Yes.
Trista Davis?
Yes.
Jenna Hamm?
Yes.
Kristen Randall?
Yes.
James Tensh?
Yes, motion passes unanimously. That concludes our new business. Did we have anybody for public comment on non-agend items?
We haven't received any emails from anybody and I would mention to the members of the public that are watching, if they do want to make a comment, send a quick email to us from school website page, school board section, under school board members, the thing in yellow says, send email to the board. That button right there, long finger, that button right there would get an email. And if you do that while I'm droning on, we'd see that and we'd be able to send you the link and bring you in to make a comment. But you don't have to. Nine thirty, also just, you know.
Just as a question, Dan, do you know how many have joined the Facebook feed?
I think the last time I checked, there were five people watching, which I think one of them would include me. So potentially four members of the public.
Okay, thank you.
At one point I did see six.
At break, I tried to find it on Facebook. Where is it at? Is it a link? From the website?
If you go to that same place on the website.
Okay.
But under this Board of Education on this section, there's a link.
Okay.
Bring you to that.
I'll give it just a minute, Dan, but I'm assuming you haven't received anything.
Correct.
All right. Well, if you'll keep an eye on it while we start our comments, we can come back, but.
Received a comment to me, but not to the board from somebody that's watching.
Is it worthy of sharing?
They accused me of being a dork. And you're done out of kindness, which is fine.
Hey, it's the open meeting. All right. We'll start with our comments. I'll just work through my chicklets here. Nikki, you're first on my screen, so have at it.
All right. I guess first of all, I wanted to just congratulate all the graduates and alumni. Just kudos to all of you. And I'm super thankful that all for all the work that went into making this happen, all the key teachers and instructors and of course, the parents and graduates. I just, I'm happy that you were happy with how it went, I guess, is another way of saying that, too. And I just thank you for the people watching and looking forward to the summer months and hopefully, you know, whether we do business or not in June or July and going into August. It'll be interesting to figure out what we're going to do and just thanks for tuning in and staying involved.
Thanks, Nikki. And I'll just let you pick the next one. We'll do it that way today.
Okay, Michelle.
I just want to congratulate all the graduates of 2020 in the district. It's a great achievement under these crazy times and everyone should be proud. Thanks to all the people in the district office that kept us informed, all the teachers that got us through to the end of school. I'm very thankful for that. I am looking forward to summer and hoping that we reach or get back to some type of normal normalcy that's even possible. And I wish everyone a safe summer. And I will pick Jenna.
Good evening, everyone. I would echo the congratulations that have been issued to the graduates in the school district. Well done. And also would thank Dan for sharing that looked like a half hour recording that you shared in your, along with your board report of the exchanges between the teachers and staff throughout the district. There's one from Keston that that gives you some kudos, Dan, saying your proactive guidance through the last four years and leading the strategic planning has made this so successful. And I wanted to give you a shout out. Echo echo that comment from Keston that really the success is due to an attentive and proactive approach. Not knowing that we would end up in this place, but using all the, having all the tools that the district needed at its fingertips, it certainly paved the way to wrap up this challenging time successfully. Kristen?
Well, once again, congratulations to all the graduates. It was fun to be able to visit with as many as I could at different opportunities and in different ways throughout their time as seniors and the school year. I am thankful that our district was proactive in getting everybody, all the students an electronic device so that this could move forward pretty smoothly. I am anxious to see the feedback and how learning went throughout the district is, is it progressed through through the months that that we had to do. So I hope that everybody has a great summer and I hope that everybody stays healthy and that this borough can can continue to ward off the the virus that is going around. Trista?
I also want to congratulate the graduates on their graduation. I was really sad. I had two nephews that have already graduated and one that's graduating soon that I didn't get to go watch their graduation. I did watch the Tri Valley one online and I thought it was really neat, actually. I think outdoor graduations are awesome. That's how I graduated was outdoors in our football field. So I thought, you know, they did a brilliant job of lighting up the cars. I went through the parking lot the next day and saw the little names on their spaces and stuff. And so I thought you guys really did a great job of making it special through a time that probably for especially the graduates was really tough. So I want to say thank you to everybody that made that work. I also, sorry, my allergies are killing me tonight, so. I want to thank Gretchen Stryker for being one of our teachers and, you know, every year we have these amazing teachers that are get these awards and it's really exciting to have another one this year. So I'm thankful that she's with us and she's Addie's crew teacher, I guess, what it is for next year. So I sat in another meeting and I was really excited to have her talk and she's just seems like such a great person, so. Anyways, I am probably as more excited than my children that school is out. I was, it's great. I'm so happy. Summer is here, so thank you and everyone. Good night. Sorry. Let's see, Vern.
I just want to say thank you all and I really appreciate you all. We're still making this happen. And again, as I said, my early part of the deal, congratulations to the, thank you and congratulations to the staff, the graduates. Everybody else. I also want to extend a small kudos up to Dr. Johnson, our Commissioner of Education for allowing the school districts to maintain local control. You know, we were able to all move into this in the way that we needed to fit our own districts. And I think that was a very smart move on his part. So Dan, if you can extend that up, I think it's a, it was a wise move on his part. So that, James?
Thanks, Vern. Yeah, I'll also extend my congratulations to all the graduates. I was fortunate enough and very thankful, actually, at the last minute, Mr. Pitt of Tri Valley School invited me to participate in the graduation ceremony. So Dan and I were appropriately socially distanced and masked, six feet well apart from each other, but we did get to don rubber gloves and hand out plastic and shrouded bags of diplomas onto a proxy table. Kind of the DMZ in the virus zone and the graduates were able to pick up their diplomas, but it was it was still special to be there. And I will say hands down, it was one of the most unique graduation ceremonies I've ever been to, so. But big congratulations again to all the graduates and to all the staff that got everybody to this point. Cannot imagine the heavy lift that everybody's been through this spring, so it's just outstanding. Absolutely. Dan?
Nurture, empowering, and inspiring today's student to positively shape tomorrow's world. You know, I I think of our mission, I think of the work that we we did with our students in this period of time and it's interesting, I think this year, maybe more than other years with our strategic plan, I heard little some little whisperings of people because we started kind of doing more work on like our character traits and in some of those, like people kind of like, ah, like what's this, this warm fuzzy, everybody's okay type stuff, you know, like work, teach them to work. And you know, this event, like our first, you know, incredible focus on during this event and kind of throughout the, throughout was like kind of that, are are kids okay? Like, are they okay? Which which is not just like what we talked about with nurturing and what we talked about with character traits, because those are also like, a lot of those character traits are aspects of like, you know, academic habits, like to be a good scholar, these are the habits that good scholars have. But the like, the core aspect of nurturing, there was just a lot of care that needed to be provided. And it kind of reflects like other kind of aspects and thinking of a kind of educational and social science research, research on like, you know, people's like hierarchy of needs, like if someone is starving and cold, they're not going to be in a place to like focus on things like self-actualization and learning. We had a lot of people that were experiencing aspects of summer hungry and cold. Maybe we're just like, you know, getting Maybe we're just like, you know, again, didn't feel safe and we were able to 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 help provide this level of support. So we could get to the point of, hey, we need to talk to you about the academic habits now because they look different. There's some different aspects of your character. That that kind of come into play now. Where things like maybe, you know, you you wouldn't need to make these decisions for yourself at this point in time. But you really need to be working on kind of that decision about, you know, following through with who you are and who you want to be. A lot more and a lot more quickly. Than than our children normally would have. I really hope that through this experience and really want us to be in a low risk operational. Setting all of next year. But through this, I I hope there are some people that can look back at like their time as a student. In Denali Brown School District during the pandemic and. Reflect on the work they did. Through the work and encouragement from their teachers. And and really be inspired by what they can do in their lives because they saw what can happen. In times of challenge and struggle and their their learning isn't. Focused just on what what academics happen, but they're learning something. Character wise about themselves and what they can do for the world and the future when times are tough.
Thank you, Dan. I think we got everything, unless you feel you need to say something profound, Connie.
No. Okay.
All right then. Well, thank you, everyone. And seeing as there is no further business, the meeting is adjourned.